Well, we can open. That's for sure.
No worries. Mr. Hardy, how are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
Out hanging in there. Waiting to report. As always concise and accurate. You sound like Rudy Olick.
That's right.
You don't sound like Frank.
Public hearing scheduled for seven thirty, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'm putting over an old Bob Dylan tape, Alan.
That's just the flavor. There we go. Is it doing it?
I think it is, yeah.
It's turning.
Testing one, two, three, four.
Hey, Mike, how'd you get in here?
Just snuck in on the door looking.
Oh, goodness. Dude, fixing your seat. Of course I was.
I think I had it at one point, but I'm sure.
Anyone been up looking at the school, no school?
Couple weeks ago.
Where do they get all the dirt? Those piles of dirt. They are huge. They say they're putting in some, um...
My home number and my office number.
Concrete and stuff and everything up there. They got a field laid out, one field laid out.
Oh, really?
And they got a big moat, a big hole filled with water by the field. Back right inside of the school, I don't know what that's for.
Yeah, I have even...
Do you need that number?
That's my home number.
Oh.
That's my office number.
Okay.
They've opened, my office is in the house, so... But the home number rings.
Have you been up there? The school?
Not for a couple weeks.
Yeah, I think I'll be this weekend. I mean, they're not moving. I mean, they did a good job on the parking area, the drains.
My son, my son was up there, my son was home for a few days and...
Alright, so...
Eat and treat, anyway. We had something bigger toys and that, so we wanted to go walk. Took a walk, parked in St. George and came to it.
Oh, nice, nice.
Yeah, you got something to put on.
Yeah, yeah.
Big boy, boy.
Well, since we're not going to open the public hearing for another twenty minutes, I know that somebody is here to talk about the proposed school on North Franklin Street.
Yes, sir.
You have the floor.
Okay, should I stand or...
Well, whatever is more comfortable. We're pretty informal, actually. But if you just give your name and everything, so we have it for the minutes.
My name is Tim Fitzgerald. Company is Mass Inspections, Mass Submittals. I'm here representing Noble Academy. We would like to thank you for allowing us this informal hearing. We are taking the building at two, we would like to take the building at two thirty-nine North Franklin and make an elementary grade one through five there. There will be, to start with, I have given you a traffic plan. We're not going to touch the building on the outside at all, except to add a handicap ramp on the front. There are some windows that need replacement. Other than that, minor petition on the first floor only. We have submitted and been okay to sprinkle the entire building, all three floors. We're doing this in anticipation of possibly increasing if things go correctly in the next five to whatever years. But we, the plan right now is to start with no more than thirty to thirty-five students. There will be nine teachers there. There will be greeters. I gave you a traffic pattern of how we intend to have the students dropped off. Let's see, so I said the fire suppression has been okay. I gave you guys probably information you didn't really want if I was asked to give the abutters list, but Dan Moriarty helped me and pointed out far too many abutters, but I duplicated the list anyway, but we will, I will coordinate that with the secretary when the time comes to do that. We anticipate using only the first floor. The top floor will be for staff, for a meeting room, a lunchroom kind of thing. There will be no students allowed anywhere but the first floor. There'll be no other businesses in there on the first floor. It'll be strictly the elementary school or strictly the, potentially six days a week. I doubt very much nights. No, maybe an occasional teachers meeting at night kind of thing, but there will be no noise. What I failed to show on there was a dumpster that will be screened in on the rear of the building. What's up there now is not, I don't think it's acceptable. When I do the submission, we'll put that properly on the plans. And that's where we're at, right there. We have sprinkled the building so that the entire building, in anticipation of whatever use becomes that building, it's now protected, so...
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
The only thing that just jumps out at me a little bit from the school perspective, and it's not anything I think that we have a problem with, is, you know, like you don't have much outside playground or anything like that.
Uh, no, no.
I guess that's just kind of...
There is a section on the back of the building that is kind of segregated, and we're not sure yet how big a play area or what we really need. And I think, to be honest with you, the amount of students that actually sign up will dictate that, whether we need to. There will be some outside activity, of course, but it's not going to be a major playground.
Yeah, it doesn't, you know, you don't have the room for...
No, exactly right.
You're not going to put in a football field.
No, it'll be no team sports, sorry. And welcome any questions and any inquiries.
What do they really need from us?
Just a site plan, probable.
A site plan?
Yeah.
Because there's no...
Just check the parking spaces, you know, basic stuff, nothing major. I mean, we'll let Sean go over it all, and he will inform us if we need anything other than that.
Yeah.
Is there an elevator in that building currently?
No. Our plan is handicap ramp on the front, handicap ramp to the basement within the next zero to five years. That will be the next portion of the building to be used. The upper floor will strictly be staff, for staff meetings, that kind of thing, but no students up there.
And you don't plan on having any handicap teachers or anything, right?
No, not at the present. Not at the present, but if they are, we'll make accommodations for that.
I would think that you'd want to do that now versus later. I mean, you know, you'd want to have the building totally handicap accessible if it's going to be a school, whether it's teachers or even, let's just say you have parent meetings or anything like that.
Yeah.
You know?
It falls under the building code. They would take care of that if that's whatever necessary is...
I've worked hand and foot here with Dan Moriarty, who has guided me through this. I happen to be a building inspector myself, so I know.
Yeah, okay.
I'm using that guidance, but I'm not a building inspector in your town, so your town, theoretically, we're all under the same code, but zoning and planning are two different things, so...
I have a question. Is this like a charter school, private school? I mean, what?
It's a private school, yes.
Private school. Five oh one C, private school.
Okay.
Noble, no relation or affiliation with Nobles in Greenough?
No, no.
I mean, Sean, do you have any thoughts on this? Have you seen anything on it?
He probably hasn't looked at it yet at all.
Yeah, I mean, this is just a, you know, parking lot in the building, is probably all we have to review anyway, as a site plan.
Now, does zoning for a school require a different amount of parking?
That's what we'll have to go over.
Yeah, he'll have to review that. I'm not sure of that.
I mean, I know this is informal, so the application hasn't been made yet, but your site plan review regs are pretty clear on the performance standards and what you just need to show makes it a lot easier. If you don't mind.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I think once you get the whole submittal in and he has a chance to look at it, you know, I don't have any immediate objections. It might be a good use of that building.
Well, it's vacant now.
Yeah, exactly.
Got to give it some life.
And it really never was fully utilized. I don't think the upstairs was ever used, was it?
Periodically.
The yoga outfit up there.
Yeah, periodically. I don't think people have come and gone upstairs. I think insurance was mostly downstairs.
Mostly downstairs, yeah, yeah. Way back, I had looked at it. It wasn't big enough for what I want, but it's... So, yeah, I mean, I think just get the application in, we'll have it reviewed, and we'll just set it down. Do we need a public hearing?
I would think so.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, you got abutters and you got this, and you've got traffic issues, you got all...
Yeah, there's enough of a change in use, yeah.
Absolutely, you know? And even traffic patterns, you know, Belcher Street is a pretty busy street, first thing in the morning. You know, that's a cut-through street. Now, you're going to have kids on that street, on that, and dropping off and everything. Yeah, I think there's a real lot to look at this.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, this isn't, you know...
This is preliminary.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, to me, I don't, I'll be honest with you, I don't think this is a great idea. I don't see much of a play area for children to be outside or anything like that. I think it's going to be a real hazard for a fight apartment. If there's a fire alarm, where are the kids going? Where do they go to get away from the building if there's a fire? I mean, this is, I think this is, this is interesting, I should say that.
Okay.
Well, answer your questions.
Yeah.
The only, and I don't know, building and then there's us, so this is site-related, so I know you mentioned that you're going to put one handicap ramp in.
In the front.
In the front. So that'll be the only accessible exit from the building.
Right, main entrance.
So you might just want to check and make sure that, I'm assuming that there's more than one exit required from this building.
Yes.
Alright, so wherever...
I'm on top of it.
He knows his stuff, let me tell you that.
He might know his stuff, okay, but wherever two or more exits are required from a building, you need at least two of them to be handicap accessible.
I understand. I understand the rules and regs very thoroughly. I teach it.
Our schools have zero.
Hmm?
Our schools have zero.
Yeah, we don't have.
What?
Our schools have zero. We don't have handicap access.
We have no handicap access at all in any of our schools.
Oh, no, because they want to do a change.
That's different than building.
This is a change of use, though. So if you do a change of use, you don't have, you're not going to hit the threshold by how much you're spending, but if you're changing the use, M A B is going to kick in, right?
That'll all be included in the form of the form.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Anything else, please, please let us know. Anything that...
Anything else you want to bring up right now, guys?
I think that's a very good point.
If I could just ask, if it's going to be included, how do you get around not having two?
How would I address that yet?
Oh, okay, alright, alright, fair enough. Alright, you were answering it, you're like, "No, we don't need it."
No, 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 I didn't say that.
Okay, alright, you're going to deal with it, alright, thank you. Alright, um...
Maybe it was Rick who was just being like, "Don't ask him." I'm just telling you, this guy knows his business.
That's fair enough.
I mean, but as a board, we have the right to ask these questions, that's all.
Absolutely.
We encourage anything you want to ask, so that we can dispel any mysteries at all. Absolutely.
What's the current mechanical situation in that building?
There's two heating units, two heating units? Two heating units, ample electric, plenty of electric. What?
Forced air heat.
Forced air.
Gas-fired.
They have nothing properly sized yet. We haven't had the MEP people come in yet, and this is just, you know, that'll be taken care of, yeah.
That's all the stuff, too, that's in the site plan reg, it talks about location and all of that.
Yeah. I have nothing until we see something more formal.
Okay, yeah. I don't either. Anything else you want to ask them tonight, guys?
So we will try and get the next submission within the next couple of weeks. How much ahead of time? Do you want a week ahead of time? Or is that sufficient, or two weeks, or...
Well, I guess the other question is, do we even, I think all we really need, I don't think we need to come back to an open meeting until we're ready for the public hearing. Do we?
Well, obviously we want a submission, so Sean can look at the stuff.
Right, right, right. I mean, if there's deficiencies, we'd certainly want you to know.
I think we'll wait for Sean's advice.
Yeah.
And then if there seems to be a long list, maybe we can have a discussion here, and then we'll have the hearing.
So if I submit to Sean, Sean and I will talk.
Well, submit...
Oh, sorry.
To the office, and she'll get it to Sean. That way we keep track of money we owe them and all that stuff.
I just like it that way, too, for the first floor.
It makes, sure, sure, sure. I mean, if it gets to the point that there are issues that you need to resolve, then we certainly would have them talk directly. You don't have to be, but for the submittal purpose, I think you want to...
I'll try to make it as tight as possible.
Yeah. So that as much, you know, if he can look at it and say everything looks great, then I think we move quickly to the public hearing. If there are issues to deal with, then we'll have to deal with them. Alright, well, thank you very much for bringing it in. We appreciate it.
You want to bag, you need to bag or...
Fifty-one per file, right?
Yeah, well, we don't even, we don't even really need them at this point. We just need the official one, one set.
Yeah, we'll take them. Do you know what, throw darts at it? Wallpaper? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can, I'll try and get something written up, and you can have it in notes if they call and they need something, you know? I think you can pass this job on to Sean anywhere.
It's an interesting, it's a tiny lot for a school. I'm just not sure why they would want it there, but I don't know that we have any...
Well, you know, it's only thirty kids, schools can go anywhere, pretty much.
Yeah.
But, I mean, not for nothing, but there goes more taxes out the window.
Our schools are taxed. Oh, it's not a nonprofit?
He said it was nonprofit.
Five, one, two, three.
See?
Okay.
You got to think this way, you can't just... There might be something in the site plan, right?
Oh, I know. Oh, I know, we know.
You can't just give everybody the okay, you got to think about things.
But you got to have good reasons, though, too.
Well, I mean, there are plenty of things to deny, and you just got to think about it a little bit, that's all. Well, I mean, but it's true, you know?
It is true. Okay, how many lost the last year? Lost from each? Lost from each? Lost, um...
We represent the town, and you have to think that way.
I mean, in the land where one got built on North Franklin Street?
But that's zoning issues that we have to correct.
Well, I think you can put a church anywhere you want, can't you?
Yeah, fortunately.
You can't zone out the...
Correct, but the problem is that prior to that, there was someone that wanted an establishment there prior to the church, and...
It wouldn't fly because of the...
So those are the things that you have to correct. I mean, if you want your town to succeed, you got to correct those things. Nothing's been corrected in twenty years.
Yeah?
Not orderly, but, we have, that hasn't been certified yet, but we are an A G, so we don't have that technically yet.
Yeah, it hasn't been approved yet, right? What is that, what is that timing? I mean, is that...
I'm not sure, I'm not sure. That's just something that they need to ask.
Alright, so wow, so all of this was for him, even though he said he got a little bit advanced on the abutters list, yeah.
Yeah. So that's, I guess, what we got.
I actually, I'm tired of it. No, actually, I actually planned to, was that I just, after my grandma was in the rehab up at the school, but probably just her home, my sweet...
Oh, really?
More than Michael.
I think so.
I don't think there's one or two, you know? I think it was a five, he said, five minutes.
Yeah.
I think this is...
That's the bell.
Proposed rise in twelve, twenty-six foot, yeah. Yeah. Temporal access.
There's dirt access to it now.
Yeah, I mean, this could be questionable, what, situation.
It's pretty high. I don't think the...
Is it?
Yeah. It drops a lot.
Yeah, okay.
Could lose, but...
Two-twenty. Two-twenty-five.
Yeah.
It drops, pretty, pretty...
Yeah, this is, five people on the road, level rolling.
Yeah.
RF engineer, they're constantly studying data, find out where they have a need for additional facilities, and then they'll send it over to the property, real estate department, and they're given a ring, which is sort of an area in which they need to find a suitable location to attach a facility, and they'll usually look for existing structures. In this particular instance, there is a transmission tower located, you know, with existing antennas already attached, so this would be a logical choice as opposed to building a new tower somewhere else.
So in that area, there's many, many towers.
Many transmission towers?
Yeah.
For N star?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they go back along there, yep, that's true.
So that, so it doesn't matter what tower you basically choose, correct?
Well, no, I mean, there are covered requirements.
Within that area?
Well, I guess the further you get back away from the target areas, the less likely it is to function, and then there's also N star's requirements. They have to be willing to allow the attachment of the facility to it, so it doesn't interfere with their operation. I mean, as you go back this way, you get into the substation.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, there's no one happens back there either. There's no houses back there that want to be providing service for us. You're getting into open space back there.
Yes, I think you're getting further and further away from the targeted objectives.
That's obviously the closest tower to...
Population.
To population, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Not necessarily. What happens if you went between Pine Street and North Franklin Street? There's plenty of towers that way.
Oh, you came this way, you mean?
Yeah.
Jim Fitzgerald. I work for Verizon as a consultant and also work with utilities. Getting farther away from the road and getting closer to the substation, the substation has kind of vital uses for what they do, and once we get into the vertical space around the substation, they pretty much restrict us from going anywhere near or across or around it. They need to be able to drop, they call it takeoff structures. It's taking the power out of the substation, and that whole area is like the Holy Grail, and they don't let us go anywhere near that. This is a courtesy on their point to even allow us to entertain this.
So in other words, you don't even go near further south on that property?
Not to mention the aerial space, because they want to be able to drop in and then drop down into the actual substation. The grounding grid around that is also, you know, it's a two-by-two, number two tin grid. It's very sophisticated ground system to make sure that the operators of the actual substation are safe while they're walking around, they have air gap. It's, they'd never let us go near there, so...
Have you looked at any of the property on Wayman Street?
I wouldn't know about that, but...
I mean, it wouldn't impact anybody.
Yeah, but there's also not a lot of residents down there. I mean, primarily this is to get their dwellings. Yeah, but there's no dwellings up there.
They want their zone.
Yeah, but there's no houses. You got to look at the street map there, too. There's no residents there to provide coverage for.
But as we go further down the road, they want a building that's going to reflect in Sean's report here, that's going to affect some of our residents in this community. So it's, need the report. So it's, you know, it's right here.
I don't get your point.
What I'm saying is, if you put it more in a remote place, okay, where it's still in that area to pick up some of that coverage, it's not going to affect any of our residents in our town.
Well, again, the more remote their services, the more...
Their service will still hit that area in that map that they've just shown us.
Maybe, or maybe not.
Not for us to decide. The department may...
It's us to ask that question, though.
Well, the RF engineer is here, so if we want to move on to that particular aspect, or do we want to continue to go through the engineer's report, and however the board would like to proceed.
I think for now, we have to deal with it as, you know, as submitted, and certainly bringing up those concerns makes sense, and it potentially, I suppose, could be a reason to deny, but...
I mean, especially when it's not hitting really a great amount of our residents in town.
Well, that's, that's a majority in Holbrook. Yeah, most of it is in Holbrook. And, you know, that's a, I don't know that that, it's, I don't, yes, I hear your point. I hear your point, but I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that that's, you know, obviously not the only consideration.
I mean, in Sean's report, there is impact to our residents, so we need to have that in mind also.
Yes, we do.
On the, you mentioned the cable tray tie and the, kind of workings of the building to the tower itself?
Yes.
Is that elevated?
Yes.
Is that, is the cable tray itself fenced off?
No.
Or is it just about, or is just elevation above outside of reach?
Like eight and a half feet.
Eight and a half feet?
A oh two, A zero two? It's on the last sheet. The varies, but the bottom of the rack, the lowest would be at six-eight, you know, just basic head clearance, and then...
I almost, I hate varies, but I don't know. I would say some protection around that myself.
That can be fenced.
You know, just, again, just, you know, like a kid thing.
N star wants it to make sure that no one can climb up it as well, so...
Yeah, obviously, that's pretty important stuff to have that vulnerable.
I maybe throw it to Sean a little bit at this point and ask him what, out of what you've heard so far, where do you see the waivers that we would, that would apply and the waivers that we would have that wouldn't apply? Do you have a comment on that at this point, out of the list that they gave us?
I don't think you can say something's not applicable. I think when you're inclined to go that way, that means you're inclined to issue a waiver.
Okay.
And being the person is probably going to be the person that has to write the decision.
We've tried to gear them towards some sort of submittal that says, "I'm asking for this waiver. This is required. This is proposed, and here's why." You guys can go down individually and agree or disagree.
Right. And that...
The fact that it's in the zoning doesn't mean you can just say that's not applicable. You have to say that's a waiver that you're willing to agree.
Okay. So, the... You have this one, too, right?
I do. I didn't bring it tonight.
Okay. But... So, the... I think I hear what you said is that the waiver request for waivers was written...
It's just a blanket, like it says...
It just says what the waiver would be, but it doesn't actually say what they're asking to waive.
Right.
I think that is something that we'd have to get. You know, some specific language. And e... Even if it's a situation like the reflective color paint, you know, I think some kind of a statement as to what you're asking us to waive makes sense.
It just makes it cleaner, and you guys are voting on it specifically. And if something happens and it gets appealed or whatever, there's a...
Right.
It is... Thank you.
Oh, Mr.... Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, just any tower setback from property lines is just at least equal to the height of the tower.
Right.
Certainly, you just... All right, it's an existing tower, but we're proposing it this, but as you indicated, it's getting ten feet taller.
Right. So, there needs to be some statement that the tower exists at this height. It's going up to this height. It obviously already is... Doesn't meet...
Nonconforming.
It's already a nonconforming. You're asking us to waive an additional height. So, if we had that kind of a specific... We could say, "Are we willing to do that or not do that?" And it becomes a yes-no on each point.
Right. And then you grant or deny.
And we're either grant or deny. And I think that's how we have to have it... Has to come back to us. I think that makes sense. I understand what you tried to do, that you did it in such a way that you weren't even sure whether they applied, but since they're all, at least in the gray area of applying, I think if you ask specifically to... For us to vote that they don't either... If you think it doesn't apply, ask... Say that. Say we've, you know, this is... We're asking a waiver for it.
It's a... It applies.
It applies. Yeah, they apply. I mean, I think all of these apply. It's just a matter of why you're asking for them not to be... Not to be held to that standard now. That... That make sense to me?
Yes, yes.
Saying that?
No.
Most of them probably aren't that big of a deal.
No.
That's to be official and make it...
Right. Out of the waivers that they've asked for, Shaun, do you see anything in your review that they should be asking for that they haven't asked for?
I don't think it's... I mean, Shaun just got it two seconds ago. I think it's...
Oh, I know. Well, I'm just saying, this is a... I'm not...
Well, I had this. It's just... The only thing I mean... The one that I had a question on is because they specifically say...
Yeah.
That no tower shall maybe constructed with an area subject to protection under the inland coastal wetland bylaw. So, they're asking for that waiver.
They've gotta tell us that it's not within that zone.
Right. But I point out that if you look on Mass GIS, there is wetland in the vicinity. It's a priority habitat with natural heritage, and it's also an area of critical environmental concern, so...
Okay.
That... I don't know that if that's... There's enough there that that's probably something that you guys don't want to get into tangling with until conservation tells you yes or no that that applies or doesn't apply.
Yeah, we don't usually deal with wet ones.
No, but it's a...
But we would want, like you said, we'd want to make sure that they were... Some thumbs up.
Yeah.
Or something before we...
So, maybe that we're kinda here a little bit prematurely and let them go to conservation and then have them come back here.
It might be an RDA and conservation says, "No, we're fine with it." But then you guys could respond to that request.
Right.
Yeah. I think that's the avenue that you wanna at least...
Well, that would have to get taken care of before it could be finalized, I think, yeah. And obviously, they must have... Assuming it was done in the past, but maybe it wasn't. I've got no idea whether conservation...
Well, our review indicated that there are no wetland resource areas within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the project area. As I said, it's already been fully developed by not only NSTAR, but also MetroPCS. I mean, if the board wants to condition its approval on getting any necessary approval from the Conservation Commission, we would certainly do that. I did send an email to Heidi Prisco, the principal clerk, just to get confirmation. I didn't receive a response.
Okay.
But our assessment was that there were no... Within a hundred-foot buffer area that would be applicable to this project.
Again, I think you're explaining it better now than it is here. So, if you... If you wrote down what you are asking us to waive, we could condition it that it has to, you know, condit... On... Based on conservation's approval or something like that as a condition of our permit. And I think that... But you need to tell us what you're really asking for and why you're asking for. You know? Clearly, it's developed. It's there now. You're not changing the footprint. You're not gonna impact... You're not gonna do anything...
You could look on Mass GIS, and there's some there. Again, how far it is, I don't know.
Yeah.
What I do know is it's an area of critical environmental concern and natural heritage, so...
So, do we know if there's any more, like, I know that could be an issue in that particular tower. What about moving to another area where that might not be an issue?
Well, as I said, we're prepared to go to the Conservation Commission if necessary to get whatever relief is required. This particular location, as I discussed, was based upon an assessment of the coverage needs. Coverage needs being primarily in Holbrook, but as you note, also into Braintree. But I'm sure as this board is aware, under the Telecommunications Act, that really isn't relevant.
Right.
But in any event, what Verizon Wireless has done in this particular instance is really to undertake a pretty exhaustive search of the area. Given that this location has already been developed for wireless purposes by MetroPCS, seemingly, it would be pretty discriminatory not to allow Verizon Wireless to also locate this particular location.
And obviously, there's a benefit to not building another tower somewhere. You know, any new tower is gonna impact somebody.
It's taxable. It's taxable.
That's true. Other than the waiver issues that are listed, Shaun, was there anything that you saw? If they came back with... And defined these waivers in a way that we could vote on them up or down or conditioned, do you see any of the holes in the application that they should be addressing?
I mean, I had a few other comments. I don't know, but... The plans indicate there's a ninety-foot driveway, gravel drive from a public right away, but, I mean, it's a no trespassing. It takes some clarification on what public right away, public right away they're referencing, I guess. It's probably more than that. You know what I mean? You go off the gated... The front of that site's gated.
Right.
Yes, so Pine Street is, what I understand, to be the public way, and this is already an existing paved area by NSTAR to get back to their substation. So, all we're proposing to do is to extend that from that driveway around to the proposed equipment space.
So, you're gonna be paving underneath the wires? The utility wires? I don't know.
No, this one is gonna be just a gravel.
It's just gonna be gravel? So, jump in there. So, how far... How far down the existing, uh... The paved road of the utilities do you go down?
This is about ninety feet, I think we said, and then we turned back in about ninety feet.
Just 'cause it shows as dashed, I didn't know.
Well, that's just to show our easement.
The way we're... So, I'm the one that did the drawings, and the way we're trying to characterize it is that that dash line is the easement that, uh... While it's on that access road. That's, you know... We just wanted to show to NSTAR. But we're just driving over it. They need to get legal rights to be able to go down it. And then it came up that we wanted to make sure that, you know, the impervious surfaces and the improvements or modifications were denoted in some way, which is the ninety feet would be from here. And for the board, from the... Where we drop off the edge of the access road to the, um, substation, this is the only portion of the property we're potentially considering changing. And that's the ninety feet, and that's the square footage for that area based on that width. We continue it just so that it's clear between Verizon and NSTAR that...
You have the legal right to use it.
They have the access easement to get through there.
And this is a current driveway that going to the tower now? Is that what I'm looking at?
There is, actually.
That's what that is.
But it's... It's terrible.
Right.
You'd get a truck stuck in that.
Okay, but it's there. But... So, what you're really doing is rather than improve that, you're moving it over.
Yep.
You're taking a... Already dirt driveway that's there, and you're shifting it.
Yep.
So, this... This square box that's on that map, that's on this map here, that's gonna be where the proposed building would be?
Yep.
And that is...
And that's gonna be underneath the lines, correct?
And the philosophy from the utility companies is they actually want us underneath the line 'cause we're working seventy feet below it or forty feet or whatever. And when they need to come up with a bucket truck or a crane or whatever, they want to approach it from the sides of the longitudinal. So, they kinda want us to be as underneath it and close because they come at it from the sides.
So, what's on the other side of the stone wall?
Uh, property.
Just to back you out of that house, I think. Or is it?
Well, there's...
I think there's a pool back there, too.
It might be.
There was?
This is, um... Or who's... Oh, right. Oh, sorry, that's the...
That's the edge of the easement, right?
That's the edge of the easement. Oh, okay.
And the stone wall goes through it, but they, at one point, acquired all that.
Yeah. Okay.
So, this is... This is a residence right here, then, obviously?
Yep.
And that's gonna affect, obviously, them with this building?
Well, I don't know how it's going to affect them. How do you mean?
Well, you did say it was a diesel-motored thing that hums like a bird.
Only when the power's low.
No, I didn't, actually. Well, what Verizon Wireless did is with their application, we included a detailed sound study, if you're referring about noise, which I'm assuming that this is an area with a lot of noise impact to begin with. But what Verizon Wireless did as part of its application was included, as I said, a detailed sound assessment. They actually went out there. They measured ambient, taking it at the quiet nighttime and also during the daytime. And then, based upon actual data and also projections based upon manufacturer specifications, it was determined that the facility would comply with all Mass DEP requirements at the nearest residence. In fact, in many cases, below ambient. So, the generator itself doesn't operate perhaps once a week during the daytime for testing for perhaps thirty minutes. That's just for serviceability and reliability. Otherwise, it would not operate unless the power was disrupted. Presumably, if that happened, it would be during a storm. I'm sure that other people in the area probably have generators as well. But even in those circumstances, Verizon Wireless' facility would still be in compliance with Mass DEP standards. So, we did offer, and we did take that effort to make certain. And there's been a lot of attenuation done to reduce the noise here. These two items here are actually... And it's on the back of the, uh... The sound study, it shows you pictorially. Those are large cowlings silencers, and the idea is to direct all the noise down to the ground. In addition, Verizon Wireless is proposing a solid wood, eight-foot-tall fence, which further attenuates it. And they're proposing to install along the fence line a noise absorption barrier to further attenuate it. So, I think what Verizon Wireless has really tried to do is be very responsible with consideration of the proximity to the neighbors to make certain that the facility is not something that's going to, um, even be noticed.
So, you said there was study that was done for the day and the night?
Yes.
So, our engineer basically said in his report, um, that they were unable to locate the developed nighttime sound levels in their report.
Well, I think that... Correct me if I'm wrong, in regards to generator operating.
Yeah, there was a... There was a table that said on the off chance, I guess, that the HVAC and the generator would be running at the same time, and they listed what the change would be for the daytime. They didn't do that for the nighttime. I also had a comment that they're measuring the impacts to the building, but as you said, at one time, a pool, I drove by there tonight, it's lit up. I mean, it's... I almost think you should look at it, was my opinion, at the property line, or, I mean, that's someone's yard.
Well, I... Yeah. I don't know what our zoning... I don't know. DEP might require one thing for noise, but typically, each town, their zoning or state plan approval requirements are, they say what it is from... Typically, from property line as opposed to building structure.
I just think that would be useful for you guys to know because you're gonna have to decide whether this has an impact in, you know, performance with the neighborhood, so...
Well, just to speak to the nighttime, in regards to the nighttime, as I said, the generator would only be tested during the daytime, so there would not be any normal operation of the particular generator. And, uh... In speaking with the gentleman who prepared the analysis, I mean, the ambient measurements are based upon quiet times, not during stormy times. So, to try compare the data that they provided based upon the ambient that was existing while there wasn't a stormy situation, while there wasn't additional generators that may be operating in the area, isn't particularly meaningful. But even having done that, he was able to project to me, and because we just received this, he wasn't able to put this in writing, but even during those times, based upon the ambient that he measured, it would still be compliant at the property line with Mass DEP standards.
At the property line?
At the property line.
With Mass DEP, which... I don't know. I would just be curious to see what their decibels rating is versus what we might have in our...
And I don't think it says that anywhere in the submission.
No, I don't think we have a... We don't have a... I don't think we have a specific...
Our own sound? We refer to Mass...
We refer to the...
Mass... Mass DEP?
They didn't... They didn't comply at the property line in the submission. They said that the studies were done at the residence.
That's what the... Right. But you're saying it would meet at the property line?
Yes, and, uh...
Okay. Okay, like, I think we should have that documented.
That's fine. But I mean, the reason we did that is because typically the way it's evaluated is at the, that's what we call the sensitive receptors and that's usually the residents, people sleeping, that sort of thing. So it seems in a lot of circumstances, looking at something at the property line, isn't particularly instructive because the property line may be a hundred ten thousand feet from wherever.
Right, in this case it isn't, obviously, and it is a, I think it's a backyard that obviously is utilized and even if it wasn't, it's somebody's backyard that they should be able to utilize. So I think I think that piece of it we'd like to see is documentation that it is at least going to meet state requirements at the property line.
Those were my comments, so looking at this though, I see one more, is they gonna resubmit revised drawings, change the revision date?
Oh, yeah.
It's the same.
It still has the old, yeah.
We we turned on the contour layer to clarify the grading. And at that point, rather than, yeah, it was only today that we got it and wanted to at least have the data on there.
Yep.
And not muddy it up and confuse things, so we can clearly.
Yeah, it is interesting, it does, it looks a little funny because the signature date is after the last revision date.
It's just because you're gonna reference it, the decision, what the date.
We're gonna reference it as a date as a.
Right, I mean, I guess the way we look at it is like if the plans were done and then sat on a desk for two weeks and then got signed.
Well, yeah.
You know, it it was more, we just wanted to be able to show that the contours were kind of in line, that we weren't really proposing.
Was that the only change?
Yeah, the materially or nothing else.
Nothing else changed except the contour line.
Which is kind of why if if we were doing something different, we would clearly bump the rev so that it's absolutely clear that something changed. But all we did was turn on the layers for the contours and stamp two pages with the professional lance repair.
What would happen if the the height stay in that particular tower and that generator, that that building? Could that be moved further away from that top, from that, from that tower so it's away from the residence?
I think the problem we had with that was in regards to.
That would decrease the sound for the residence, you know what I'm saying?
Except like what you're saying, and they're supposed to have it under the wires.
But if the wires runs.
These are the wires.
They also can't go to the substation.
They can almost put this over here and have a turnaround there.
This is a tower.
Can I jump in real quick?
The tower, too?
Oh, yeah. Part of.
Well, still, I could put this here.
Or do you wanna go?
I wanted to say something, yes. Are there brothers or sisters saying anything tonight?
No, we're gonna, absolutely, yes.
Okay, 'cause I got a lot on my mind.
Okay, good.
So one of the things about what Dan was explaining is that basically this is like a two-bedroom facility. We've got one room that has the generator and the other room that's got the RF equipment in it. The room that has the generator has the double containment wall, the triple containment with the way the floor and the epoxy system is made. And it's like a four-inch-thick concrete wall. It's bulletproof from the outside for regular caliber firearm, so moving in a way, we'd probably make things worse, just. It's it's already inside a building, they put in the sound attenuation hoods, the the wood framework. I'm I'm kind of like a neutral party, you know.
But why why would it make it worse?
Uh, 'cause it'd be exposed, it wouldn't be inside a concrete building.
Move the whole facility.
That's what I'm saying. Move the whole shoot match.
Oh, oh, oh.
To like to the end of the, to the end of the, uh, to to turn around, take them.
Well, the only place they could put it would be here, 'cause that would be under another line.
Well, the lines go deep.
I think we did.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah.
Overhead, this is another tower.
And a wire.
These are, these are.
There you go, anywhere in there, get back a little further.
Well, then you're starting to get into a lot more grading.
Well, yeah, well.
And you're also getting into.
Two-twenty, it ain't that much, three feet.
You're also into the 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 lines that go between this and the tower would be a lot further away.
You know, you you try to work with the resident and you try to work with the company, you know, and.
Well, I mean, a lot of work went into this before we came to you folks, as far as the location, we had to work with N Star. They want us underneath this one, you can't, over here, we're not underneath any of the towers, we're gonna be in their way as Jim has already alluded to. So I mean, this is the location that N Star was, has approved and allowed us to to locate our facility based upon their need to manage and maintain their infrastructure, which is obviously very important as well, because we all wanna get electrical power.
I I I know that N Star is is trying to tell you where you wanna go, but we have the responsibility of residence, you know what I mean? So, you know, maybe this isn't the place for it, you know? I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, rationalize different things, that's all.
Why don't we open up to the to the other people that have come and and see one of the comments?
Well, this guy, this guy, this guy wants to seem to talk, he's part of the company, right?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Dan Brown, RF engineer. So the generator is stored in the same shelter as the RF equipment. And from an RF standpoint, we do need to keep that radio equipment as closest to the tower as possible. The antennas and the equipment are connected by a lengthy coax run. So as we move the shelter away, we're increasing that run, increasing loss to the system and ultimately impacting the coverage.
Okay.
To translate, what are you saying, the the amoeba maps that you're looking at with the colors, that'll start to shrink?
You get less, yeah, the further away, it's less efficient.
But we're only talking a couple hundred yards.
Why don't we, I know that you'd like to, you'd like to speak, if, please, if you could say who you are and where you live and.
George Javy, three-three-three Pine Street, next to the butter, the closest to the butter, right here. And I am totally opposed to this altogether. They say they spoke to the neighbors, we never even saw the guy until tonight. Nobody spoke to us, either one of us. You know, it's just, uh, these things go through like this too many times. And the noise level, the noise that's there now, they hear it, I hear it, and I'm two houses away.
But is the noise coming from the the wireless? Or is it coming from what's already, I mean, I used to live on John's Avenue and I could hear it, I could hear it a different day.
That was the main generator down in N Star. From nineteen sixty-seven, I've listened to that stupid thing all night long, it goes off at night, bang, like shotguns going off. I'm serious. And they said, there's no noise, it's a red straight up in bed, it wakes you up, two or three o'clock, when they strike a break, a snap and took one line.
But that's there now, I mean, that's the power company, right?
It's there now, they changed the generators now, and now it's still humming all day long.
Will will this increase any of that? Will it minimize any of that? It won't have any impact?
The the day in and day out, the only thing that will impact it will be the generator. Other noise.
Well, I mean, I would suggest that it wouldn't even be any impact on the generator, but or any of the facility whatsoever. As I said, MetroPCS, I don't know how long they've been operating there as a wireless provider. So Verizon Wireless is just requesting the same rights that the town has already granted to another wireless service provider to operate at the particular locations.
All right, but the question is, aside from the generator, is there anything else with the equipment you're installing that would have?
No, well, there are two HVAC units, I mean, you have to heat and cool the equipment inside the equipment shelter. But that was included in our sound study analysis and that would run, we we analyzed that at daytime and at nighttime. And the measurements, once again, were below ambient.
The nighttime was according to, there was nothing, the results of nighttime levels were not in the report.
Are those are those bards that you use on that?
Pardon me?
Those, the units, bards? Yeah, the Walmart and. Go units? Yep, and they're lead legs, so it's not when they're, it's only one is running.
Yeah, they're not sanitary, it's redundant, yeah.
Well, I know, I think the report from the town engineer was suggesting that the generator was not modeled. We clearly modeled the HVAC units using nighttime measures. We measured ambient levels at the nearest residence, at the nighttime at forty-six, and I'm sorry, forty DBA. And the at the nearest residence, the HVAC is only measured at thirty-two DBA. So we're below ambient, so there's noise that is greater than the noise that will be created by this facility.
And you're you're the.
My name is Beth Tolson, I live at three-twenty-nine Pine Street, so my property is the most impacted.
But this is your house that we're letting add on the plan?
And, you know, obviously, we're particularly sensitive to this project because N Star has completely defoliated the property behind us and next to us. So anything that, any changes that happen, we're gonna be able to see from our backyard. So, you know, I'm asking for the planning board to keep that in mind and to, you know, to really ask questions about what, I'm not sure where that shelter is going to be. I suspect that we'll be looking at it right from our backyard or we'll be looking at a Stargate fence directly from our backyard.
I think that's true.
And so, you know, that's something that doesn't make me very happy. It certainly decreases our property value further after what N Star has done. And I still have concerns about the sound and that's something, you know, that I know you've done studies on, but I'd I'd like more information about what the impact of the sound will be. The, you know, the big thing is, you know, the changes visually, you know, what's it gonna look like when we're sitting in the backyard? So, you know, those are two important things for me.
Analysis, maybe the whole thing?
Question, is the other facility that they have referenced same generator?
I'm just gonna ask. I don't think Metro does. I don't think so does.
Asking for something that's the same as the other one isn't really what they're asking.
It's not apples to apples.
Right, right, this is this is a more.
Elaborate.
Elaborate and sophisticated setup than what's there now. Doesn't have a generator there now, you don't have that separate building that way, you don't, you're ten feet higher. I mean, it is an expansion, there's no question about it.
Yeah, it is, good.
Just to address the one comment, I mean, it would be helpful, we could certainly put some shrubbery along the outside of the shelter that faces towards the butter's residence.
I mean, maybe there could be a way to put at least, you know, a visual somehow.
Yeah, we could put some bushes.
We do have some, oh, weak, I shouldn't say weak, N Star does have some restrictions as far as clearance, electrical clearances.
Yep.
Unfortunately, they they go, they call it mowing, but it's clear cutting.
Yeah.
And that's what you experienced. I was on the site several years ago and it was well foliage, like you described. They came in and cleared it all out. And part of that is the the, there was federal money with the FERC and NERC, it's a federal energy regulatory committee. They had to go through and for system reliability, go in and clear out the right of way. But what we've done in some other towns or locations is after that's happened, offered up to to put stuff closer to the property line. It won't be an electrical issue if the trees get taller or bigger or whatever and add some of that buffer back that they'll stay away from and they have an approved list of vegetation that they'll let us put in that doesn't grow too too high, but would still from an eye level height eventually mature into a barrier.
Another possibility, if the owner wanted it, would be potentially to put some on her land. You know, if if she wanted that as a barrier, you know, if you couldn't put it on the inst, you know, on the right of way.
There's like a little, I don't know how sensitive they are to.
That's a drainage easement.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is if she wanted it.
Right there.
They could run a whole, along your line and then it wouldn't be something that N Star could couldn't restrict.
Low down, down the road.
Yeah, yeah, I'd go ahead and chop down just 'cause they don't want them there in a year or two, you know, possibility. I'm just throwing that out as something not, not, you know, but it's something that we could require if that was something that was useful to the neighbors.
So if if we're talking other tow, is the other tower on that map at behind St. Joe's, is that that other tower?
Yes.
Yeah.
The Holbrook site, yeah.
Okay, good. Uh, and then that's, it's right now, as of right now, that's it then, there's there's that tower and then this proposed.
In Holbrook.
In Holbrook.
Yeah, that tower that you that you've taken about is Verizon's only existing facility within Holbrook. This one's needed to cover Pine Street and North Franklin in the northern areas of Holbrook, but that site fails to cover. Just due to shared distance and, right.
I mean, if you go back into like where it says on the map sec, Cannonman Drive, there are also, Chris has it, that.
That one, yeah.
You know, there are high tension wise in that location, in that area too. Granted, it's in Braintree, but there are locations of high tensions in in that area too.
Most likely at a much lower elevation. One of the reasons why this particular tower is of such interest.
That's the highest point of all that.
Well, if you, I mean, if you go from, if you go from Pine Street heading toward Braintree, you you do go up a bit, you know, so.
But that's not where, but that's not where.
He has a topo map, if that's helpful.
Let this be interesting to see where.
So RF is highly terrain based, a site will cover what it can see, as you guys probably or may know. So if we were to move anywhere to the east, we'd be moving down to a lower terrain elevation. It would struggle if not be unable to cover on the other side of the terrain, ultimately limiting the amount of capacity it could provide to Holbrook.
Yeah.
And in this location, the majority of the benefit would be in not only Braintree, but also just the town forest, which is not what usage is, there's no residents there.
Have you have you looked into across the street from this location? Like behind, like Damon Ave?
I I think you said they couldn't, they wouldn't let them do that.
Well, we couldn't get any closer to the the substation, so you're suggesting.
It's the opposite direction. It's the opposite direction. Because.
The power lines go across the street, obviously.
And there's no, there's no, there's no residence once you get back into that area and you don't lose any height, you know, elevation.
You'd be back sort of near White's Farm, that's gonna be developed, but the power lines are there, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's not.
That would be lower in elevation and it would affect the.
It does drop down, the the right of way in that direction does go down.
I think this is also population matter too, not providing coverage for trees.
Correct, so the location, so right now Verizon has flagged a sector on the Holbrook site and a sector on the Randolph site to see the capacity limits if new facilities not.
You you feel like great in this area?
Well, first, there would have to be a available structure, I know the original.
It runs the whole.
Damon.
I know the original search ring, the site acquisition specialist searched throughout this whole area, they identified, they identified that there was not any existing structures of sufficient height. They look along John's Ave and this general area.
Yeah, but but this, but these lines clearly go, you know, they go across all the way down.
Once they cross the street, all the towers change height too.
When you, when you go in the.
When the towers cross the streets, they're max, max elevation, they drop, they drop on both sides when you come across it, when you come across.
So the towers are probably low.
How do you know that? I mean, I'd like to see that in writing, I mean.
Oh, just as a point, that, over by Damon Ave, there's carriers on either side of Damon Ave.
Carriers as?
Other, like Metro is already here, Verizon's proposing, over on Damon Ave, they they crouch at the, that little intersection.
This carrier's in that section?
So already.
Aren't you piggybacking on that other company?
Yeah, the the other ones are basically just like this, this is the only one in that kinda area that had the the vacant spot to occupy, which is why.
So the tower was a fool, you're saying?
Everyone looked, you know, we're we're trying to find the easiest and the the least hurtful of all possibilities and.
Hypothetical question, you know, if you go in the wrong direction topography wise and you're going, you know, you're starting to bridge, but then you're in a more remote area and you have to make your tower twenty-five feet higher.
Right, who cares?
Is there some, what's what's the limitation there?
Yeah, but there's no, there's no custom in there, it doesn't matter how high a tower is.
No, no, no. But just, no, just for a minute though, it's just.
Yeah, no, he's he's got a good point. At that point, it becomes capacity, I'd like the structural capacity, like, we can, these structures are close as it is. So if this particular line on this side, not this one, but on this side, was redesigned back in the seventies and they really stretched out what they could get out of those towers from the electrical side and capacity side. And, you know, ten feet, it works, twenty-five wouldn't, wouldn't, it it would fail structurally.
Structurally, it wouldn't work. Yeah, well, but, well, structurally it wouldn't work, so that's, it's like a monopole going up the middle. But if you had a pole with guys on it, would that work? This is my question, I'm.
Okay, yeah, 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 no, no, it's a good question, the, to guy it, the, we'd occupy again, kinda similar to like the substation. We'd be, end up messing with the the right of way.
Not only that, you get down that direction, it's all wet ones.
Oh, but but just in in general, answer your question, the guy wires, I mean, could it be made to structurally work with guy wires? Yes, but then it would completely kill this and in, I don't know, twenty years, they'd be looking to widen the right of way because we've taken up the portion that was, was working just for this.
Yeah, and I'm looking at this fight, but you know, hypothetically, it's got a little.
Yeah, no, no, no.
A little bit more breathing space and.
It's a logical response to a tall skinny thing, you guy it and it'll stand up, but.
The wires have to attach somewhere.
Right.
But if you went, and if you did go down that way, I mean, that's all void blocks and wet ones down in there.
Yep. Yeah, the resource Sean was talking about is kinda like down in this way and I think Dan quoted around two-hundred-and-fifty feet and I think it is about that.
It slips down.
Yeah, so there's a swale and then there's a, where the road crosses over into the, it's kinda right next to the substation. So that's already built like right up against it, so. Yeah, I mean, we only have a little bit of flexibility in in height on any given tower. And these ones particularly, back in the seventies, they they stretched themselves, N Star did, to make those towers work. It went from a one-fifteen line to three-forty-five and they have to increase the clearances between the phases almost by like three to four feet per phase. So it ends up going from a.
So high tension, gotta go higher.
High voltage, you gotta go higher, the the air gap needs to be. The, the air gap needs to be greater when it comes to these ones and they've already kind of pushed this to its limit. And so anything up and down this right of way, along this right of way, going from Holbrook all the way to Walpole, there's probably seven of these on this type of structure. So we've figured it out, proved it and it works, um, but yeah, there are disadvantages.
I think what you, what, I guess my, the question though is, is if it was on, wouldn't a tower on this same line, say over here, be essentially the same tower?
Nope.
Would not?
Nope, not, no. There, there are four, if you're interested, there's, there's, there's four different types of structures along a utility right of way.
Okay.
There's a dead end structure and that's where the lines, if you can picture it, all the wires are pulling on each other. The last one, uh, is the one where they drop down into the substation, that's a dead end structure.
Yep.
So on one side of it, it's being yanked pretty hard.
Yep.
On the other side, it's just slacks right into the substation.
Right.
Then there's tangent structures. The lines just drift through it.
Yep.
And then for them, they have light angle structures and heavy angle structures. So around, like, uh, it's usually about seven.
This is at a.
At about seven degrees, they, they, they start to go into like much more massive towers.
So this is a much stronger, the straight lines.
Yeah, when they come in and they take like a 45, those are like, the heavy angle structures are massive. I, there was one, you could drive a truck, tractor trailer truck right underneath the legs of it because it was that big.
Yeah.
And it was, it's actually on this line. It's over by, um, it's over in Stoughton by the IKEA.
But the next one down here, because they're straight lines, would be.
Then that one, this one is a tangent one. That's a little skinny, light duty one.
That's a light duty.
This one actually is the best one in this area because it's a, this is a light angle structure. So it's built better than the ones on either side and the, that dead end structure, the takeoff structure, they won't let us touch.
Yep.
Um, so in the area and, and this one is the old cousin of this one.
Yep.
Before they modified this one to be 345, it was the same as that one.
Right.
And so they, they modified it, made it taller and actually made it, this one structurally is more stable, but it's short. And they, they, they extended this one to get the phase spacing for the 345.
And now you can't go on that one because it's a little bit shorter, but what happens if?
It's a lot shorter. It's, it's probably like 30 feet shorter. Um, so.
That, that's.
This particular right of way is actually a.
You've made a study.
You know it pretty well.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's fascinating, but, uh, like I said, even these guys, they've done their homework and they, they're trying to, trying to find the best place for it.
Yeah. So the, the noise issue is, I, I'd just like to ask you a question a little bit about the bang that you hear. I'm confused, a little bit confused about what that is.
It's the circuit breakers closing.
And then at this, are those breakers at this tower?
No, no.
At the substation.
At the substation? Oh, of course, that can hear.
Yes.
Okay, well, that, yeah, okay, I can, I can see what you mean by that, but unfortunately this has got nothing to do with that. We're not gonna, we can't do anything with the, with the, uh, substation, unfortunately.
Now you're, you're building a new building up there near the street?
I'm sorry?
You're gonna put up a new building for all this equipment?
Well, it's, it's this.
It's behind the tower.
It, it would be behind, from the street to the tower, it would be right behind the tower.
Right behind the tower.
Yeah, right. Here, if you look on the, on the plan, you can see that rectangular area, that would be the new building. And.
It's a 12 by 26 prefabricated shelter that they bring in. And this is the proposed fence.
So looking back from the road, it would be right, pretty much straight behind the tower. And obviously to your backyard, it, it would only be, what's that, 30 feet?
Yeah.
So your, this would be, your property line is here. Oh, wait, that's the, yeah, that's the right of way. This is the property line.
Right, 30 feet.
So that stone wall is your property line, so it would be only about, well, this is only 20.
So this is.
Six.
Right to the right.
It's to the right.
Yeah.
It's the, at the end of your property.
Yeah, oh, at the end, looking straight ahead.
If you were in your backyard, this is your house, so if you came out your back door and looked to your right.
Yeah.
You would be looking right at it.
Yeah.
It, it's not all the way to your, way back in your land. It would probably, you know, it's.
I see.
But that's why I was wondering whether or not some kind of tree line could be put in.
Well, right, um, NSTAR's promised us that as well.
Well, we.
So maybe they can be erased.
Well, the thing is, we can, we can, we can require it.
Yeah.
I mean, if this would, if, if, this wouldn't be a promise, this would be a permit and they wouldn't get to use it until they did what they said they were gonna do. That's a possibility. I'm just throwing that out for you, for your consideration.
Well, it's something. I mean, it's.
Well, and it could be, you know, and we could, and because it would be on your land, you would have control of it.
Mm-hmm.
They couldn't come in and cut it down.
Yeah.
They couldn't, you know, throw herbicides on it and kill it.
Yeah.
Um, and, and we could come up with some kind of a, uh, some types of relatively fast growing trees, but that would fill out.
Yeah, and they have a list and, you know, they, you know, there are many things on the list that would provide screening.
Yeah.
That don't grow taller than, say, 15 feet.
Well, but that's under their lines.
Yeah.
Once it gets onto your property, they, what they could do is any branches that grew onto theirs, they could trim, but you could, but you could control, I'm just, I mean, does that make sense to you?
To an extent, I mean, there is obviously already a huge transmission structure right here.
Oh, I know that.
All they're proposing to do is put in a small building to the fence.
I understand that too.
So I don't know that our impact is really proportionate to what's being suggested, to be honest with you.
Well.
But there's impact.
Yes, but I mean, there's already a 130 foot transmission structure.
Yeah.
Right, but you're adding to the ISO.
Yeah. Um, but if there's a way that we can improve it without, I mean, trees aren't that expensive to put in.
No, it's.
Um, that would be a relatively small cost compared to what you're doing, you know, this is a, I mean, the way, I like your design of, the way you're describing the sound.
We can, we can consider the trees. We can figure it out. It's just, um, gets a little complicated as far as who's responsible for watering the.
Well, no, once we get to that point, it would be situation that they would, the ownership would literally be turned over and you wouldn't have any responsibility for the trees after they were put in correctly.
Yeah.
I mean, that, you wouldn't want them to have any, you wouldn't want them to be able to come on your land.
Right.
Do anything to the trees once they were there.
Yeah.
So I think we could come to an agreement there that you'd be off the hook once they were put in correctly and, and you would then have at least some benefit of, of, as they grew, would hopefully block some of the view at least.
Yeah.
I, just, this is just.
Are these?
Thoughts right now.
Are these, are these, um, plantings you depicted on the drawing something you intended to put in anyway, or is this something that's already there?
Those are, those are from the survey.
That's from there?
Those are the caliber, the diameter of what we found.
That are there now.
Okay.
Yeah, well, they're 18 inch, they would put in an 18 inch.
Well, don't, don't, don't give away the farm.
No, I, I.
I didn't even notice, I just saw the standard design pattern. Something they were throwing in.
Which one? What else do we need from, I'm, I'm just thinking, at this point, we need the, the waiver requests clarified as to what we're really being asked to vote.
Do we need more clarity on the sound information too?
Light. What, what was not listed, the nighttime difference?
It didn't list the generator and the HVAC at night.
Okay, and we'd like to have the numbers at the pride line.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Okay, so that, those issue, if we can define those issues, I think we can deal with the sound issue.
What's the building construction?
Pardon me?
What's the building construction?
It's a prefabricated concrete.
It's panelized?
Pardon me?
Panelized?
I don't know.
So it comes in sections?
No, I think it's, it just comes on a flatbed and they just.
Oh, precast structure, okay, I got you.
I think it comes all loaded, you're gonna generate in there already?
Oh, gear, gear.
And they just bring in the radio.
Also, they just drop it on.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just know that they won't let us near it.
Right, Jim, that's the way down here, prefabricated shelter dropped in place?
Yep.
Yeah. So it's a precast building basically?
Yep. Yeah, chipped out, it's basically a big concrete box.
What's the, uh, what's the roof structure?
There, it's a rubber membrane, but it's a precast, um, concrete.
Concrete roof.
That's sloped and then they.
You just have the membrane.
Put the membrane on it, they, you know, it's glued down and then they put the cornice on it.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, uh, that's what the state police uses and branch most of the homeland security.
Yeah.
Whenever it's a, you know, welded wire mesh, it's like a four inch thick concrete wall with an aggregate finish on the outside, like I said. Supposedly they're.
Additional height to get the range, right?
Yes.
A normal bullet, yeah. You're taking.
An armor piercing something.
No.
Basic.
50 caliber probably good for it, but yeah, yeah, might.
University of Montana, did I understand it?
Oh, so, okay, so Metro PCS is at this height.
Yeah.
But they're not above the top of the existing structure, right?
They mounted right to the side.
So if, yeah, if I could, and, and I'm just trying to, again, I'm asking because I want to understand, you know, when you find the right tower, you want to go to it and if you go further away to get additional height, but I mean, how far did they go to get, to make these work as far as?
This.
This pole right now, what does it get? Does it get, get the footing that rests on and then it relies on?
No, it didn't.
This for additional structure or how, how do they work?
Yeah, that, that, you're, you're exactly right. So it, it gets like a, it's usually, I mean, it'll depend on the soil results, but it's usually like a four by four by five and a half, six foot deep concrete block.
Yep.
That gets poured. Um, and then normally they usually have like five, um, this is what they call the, the waste of the tower, comes up like this. So there'll be a connection point here in, you know, there'll be four angles that come into a flange, like this is all in 20 foot sections or.
Yeah.
We give them the original drawings of this tower and then they come up with how they're gonna do it. So then there'd be a horizontal connection point here, here, and then usually like two more. The arms are usually like a good strong point to connect into, so they'll pick one or two or more of those and they'll connect it back up the top. So this, you know, really isn't a tower all by itself without the tube.
Yeah.
This one wouldn't work, you know, so, and, and this allows us to, by, by doing the tubes, it allows all the coax to go inside, all the wind loading from, all the wires and they have quite a few of them, that, that all stays inside. Um, a round shape gets a better shape factor as far as the wind loading, it's more laminar as it goes by it, so it's got, someone else came up with it and they're probably on a beach somewhere now, but it was a good idea. And so that's, it, it does get connected at probably a minimum of like five locations for horizontal loading and then all the vertical loading, the cable inside gets, there's like little hooks all around the circumference and they're cable grabs that they hang the, the wire into and then it just hangs down and comes out.
So basically they're using this just basically to avoid to put up their own individual tower.
In a way, yeah.
It, this is a tower. And so the, um, Metro, the other service here, they, they just have something off the side here, something.
Yeah, that's them right here.
Yeah. So I mean, so they, so, I mean, I guess what I was gonna ask, and again, I'm just trying to understand, have you or is it feasible that more height was needed? Could they put a, a spread footing in here so that this would become more of a self supporter and that you're not relying as much on this?
You could, I don't know if, I don't know what we'd gain by doing that.
To get more height. Why would you want more height?
Somewhere else, you mean?
If, if, if you have an ideal location, but the.
Oh, but you have to.
And you got another spot that's a little further away, that's a little bit lower and it's like, oh, if we move it further away, then.
The problem, I think I heard was that most towers aren't that high.
Yeah, the, the, this one's, I know where you're going and could you maybe, the, trying to get in here, it's, it's one thing to dig a four by four foundation and frame it, you know, dig it, step it, make it safe, put it in the foundation.
Yeah, how deep does it go? The foundation?
Five and a half, six feet. It's not huge because gravity load isn't too, too tremendous.
Yeah.
Um, but i- if we start getting into questionable undermining of.
Oh, no, no, I mean.
You know, like, but by the time we start getting out, that, you know, if, if you want to call it a 45 degree of influence.
Yeah.
You know, we're, no one's, no one's ever tried it and.
Oh, really?
No one's ever approached.
They haven't done it?
NSTAR to try and like dig out the under, you know, the, the inside of the tower.
Yeah, no, they haven't likely do that. I don't think.
Well, unless it was.
This is like, it's like, I don't know.
Yeah.
From an engineering standpoint, it's a nice marriage of two different things that's ugly to begin with and we want to make it a little more ugly and.
Yep. Okay, like, oh, again, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what's out there for, for, for options, so.
This, this whole system, I, you know, I, I was impressed when I first started to learn This, this whole system, I, you know, I, I was impressed when I first started to learn about it, I was like.
Yeah, no, it absolutely makes sense.
All right, we're gonna continue this thing?
I think we're gonna have to because we're getting in more information.
We see more information.
We have to, we can't take any information in once it's closed, so we'll.
Just so I understand, so I'll give you a specific statement to justify the waivers.
Yep.
Um, look to noise compliance, nighttime generator in the property line.
Right, day and night.
Update the revisions on the plans.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else, Sean, that you?
Also my comments.
Yeah. Anything else, I think it covered what?
Uh, the weapons?
Well, we would probably, um.
Be contingent upon.
In the meantime.
I, I think you should, but it's listed, it's listed as a waiver, so if you're gonna ask it as a waiver, I think you'd have to, again, explain why you're asking for it as a waiver and then we would then probably make it contingent upon conservation review.
And as I said, I did reach out to the clerk.
No, you might have that answer, I mean, if they.
Two hundred fifty feet, but we need to ask him for that waiver.
So, if you go down that, if you go down that driveway, down to, um, the high tension, down to the high tension.
Yeah.
On the right, yeah, there's a piece of land for sale, so you have a tunnel, a tower there?
Um, I don't know where you're at, but.
So, if you, if you go down that access road here?
Yep.
On the, on the right halfway down, there's a piece of land that's for sale.
Over here?
Really?
Yep. Would you ever put the tower there?
Then, you're talking Wayman Street?
Well, then we have to put a new tower and meet all your standards and be trying to go on the existing structure, I think it's actually preferred to, for us to go on the existing structure and build.
But it's, but it's, it's, you're still away from the, the residence.
Yeah, but that's, they want to be near the residence, that's the problem.
Close to other.
It, it's, it's not that far away, you could throw a rock in, well, no, you'd have to have a good arm, but, you know. It's not that far away, but, I mean, I'm just saying, that's another possibility.
Probably.
I mean, I think by law, according to occasion, I'm just trying to see why it would be another power. We already got this.
I'm just throwing it out there.
All right, well, we'll have, if we get that information, at least I think we'll have everything we need. Um, we appreciate the fact that you came in, other than, other than the, the noise that you're getting, which is primarily coming from the substation, unfortunately, I, I just want to be sure you've had a chance to make any comments you have about this specific thing. We've heard what you. All right, um, then what we will do is continue the hearing until, uh, any idea how long it might take you to, to get this stuff to us?
Um, I think we could do it, you know, fairly quickly. Um, it's just updating the plans, getting a quick supplement to the sound study, so I don't know when the board is next scheduled to meet.
We, we don't have a schedule at this point, we'll, what I'm looking for is when you're gonna be ready, we'll, we'll pick a date tonight to reconvene the public hearing.
Okay. The last week in October, do you want to look at that or?
Like the twenty-eighth?
Let me just see. I think I already have something on the twenty-eighth.
We could.
That's my birthday too, so.
Well, we can shift it.
We can have cake.
We can shift it to the next week, either the third or the fourth.
That's a case, all right.
Yeah, Mike, I could. So, you're only meet on Wednesdays, is it right?
Well, we try to meet, tw- well, sometimes Tuesdays.
Doesn't matter, mate.
Twenty-seventh? We can, we can be flexible, we could do it Tuesday the twenty-seventh, or we could even do it Thursday the twenty-ninth, well, Patriots are playing that night, I'm not sure if we're going.
Oh, okay.
You can have it anyway, you know what's gonna come.
We can have it, we can have it in a library box.
Maybe. Does the town have an issue with that?
Um, so we'll let you, I mean, you know, the twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth would work, or, or you said eight, it wouldn't work, you said possibly the twenty-seventh or the third or the fourth?
Yeah, I can do the, I mean, the third, the third work for everyone?
Tuesday the third?
November third. Somebody's my calendar.
Work for you?
Not necessarily, but I don't really, I don't think for me, the Wednesday, the fourth would be better, though.
Wednesday the fourth would be better for you? Does that work for, for you guys too?
The, the third is election day too.
Oh, we can't do it.
Oh, that's right, not the third then.
Okay, so the fourth?
Fourth?
November the fourth?
Fourth, fourth?
I guess so.
Fourth. We'll have, we'll, uh.
Maybe the fourth.
That, you said, when are they going to have material submitted for review?
Yeah, you need to have it to him at least a week ahead.
No problem.
Any, anything else anybody wants to bring in before we, before we, uh, before we just take this meeting in?
Okay. So, motion to continue till November fourth.
Okay.
Seven thirty or?
Seven thirty.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor with a second, all in favor? Any others?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For review?
So, we'll see you on the fourth.
Thank you again.
Thank you. And thank you for coming in too.
That was November fourth.
November fourth, yeah.
At seven, seven thirty?
Well, we'll be at seven. The public hearing, seven thirty for the public hearing. That's kind of what I was thinking. Um, I'm not sure what else, that was the only other thing we had with a minute. Yeah. Oh, one other thing did come in and I'm, I just wanted to bring it up, I know, uh, it was in the folder too, um.
Gotcha.
They're having, uh, meetings for the fair housing meetings. Um, I don't, we haven't attended any of them.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, thank you very much.
Good night.
And, Sean, we can let you go, thank you. Oh, somebody left something?
Somebody in the house said it was there.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
Oh, I've missed you. Nice to meet you all coming to our end. Quick question, Sean, what, what does the model, what's that, what's that mean when you, um?
She talked to me earlier and told me she was gonna talk about.
It said something as a.
It, it would not mean anything.
The sound assessment appears to model, what, what do they use, what, I think it's probably some type of sound.
Well, we run, we run an analysis and it's, but they picked the corner of the house. It's a computer model that they ran.
Okay, sorry, yeah, I just wasn't sure, like, wasn't sure what that really meant, you know?
Honestly, I didn't know much about it, so I started throwing a lot of reading.
Yeah. It's a whole other, different ball.
So, I, do they, do they ever like, um, so, what does Verizon, they must pay the utility company something for using that tower.
Oh, yeah, they lease, they lease.
Right, so like.
That's where the church is, right?
Yeah, exactly. No, we, we forced them out. They were before the selectmen and they, selectmen got greedy, they want too much money, so they looked somewhere else and they got at St. Joe's. That's, that's how they ended up.
It's a moneymaker.
Because they were going down, they were originally going down off one of those big towers off Wayman Street, which is where they were looking to put it.
Mm-hmm.
And they, uh.
Verizon, because I, I obviously have them, we lose your phone is down off of.
On Wayman Street.
On Wayman Street.
On Wayman Street.
It breaks your liberty too.
Yeah.
So, like, you know.
Hello.
Well, anyway, um, they'll get us more information, we'll have time to deliberate on it. The, um, we have these.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Sean.
I did want to mention though, if anybody wanted to attend the, the fair housing meeting, I'm probably not going, if anybody interrupted.
I saw, I was, was one the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
See, I'm gonna be unable to down there, I don't know.
Well, not a real presentation, but I'm going here in front for a minute.
A minute?
A minute, yeah. Um, oh, we, we, we ran a little long on our.
So, I noticed that, geez.
But, um, we, we definitely, uh, will take, give you a few minutes.
Yeah, it's only a couple of minutes.
Just, just a couple of minutes, just to get an idea of what you're talking about.
Sure.
Uh, so if you want to do that, please go ahead.
Um, so Steve and.
Good evening.
Stan, I always call you Ken, I don't know why, you look like your sister's brother-in-law, father-in-law. They, they want to show you the pictures and give you a basic overview of what it would look like if it was to happen.
Yeah.
On North Franklin Street, and we were talking about that, and we met with Dan, like you guys asked, and, um, the difference in number of units is thirty-three, I think, so that's quite a difference.
Quite a difference, and I'm not sure that, I, I think it's a zoning issue and I'm not sure that, you know, we could do much about it anyway.
Right, you'd have to do the, the whole thing and all that, but, you know, I just figured since.
But it's interesting to see what, what you'd like to do.
Right, right.
And what was the number before, forty-five?
No, fifteen?
Yeah, fifteen is allowed in the new district when they finally, you know, go through the attorney generals and stuff, and what they drew up is forty-five or forty-eight.
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 So, forty-eight.
Yeah.
So, um, again, please, as briefly as reasonable, because obviously you're not before us with a, yeah, we'll make it brief.
Yeah, we'll be speedy.
So, let me give you a little background.
Okay, please.
We, uh, I'm an architect, KFC architect from Hangum, associate Stan, and a, a commercial real estate broker that we work with had the listing of this property, the old Harbor Medical, and, you know, it sat out there for a long time. And we worked with this fellow on, uh, this broker on a number of different sites and towns throughout the northeast Massachusetts area. So, he says, Steve, I'm having the toughest time, you know, no one seems to be interested in this thing, you know, what do you, what do you think we should do with it? I said, well, if you're getting no bites, it's, it's kind of a white elephant, I mean, it's a, it's a doctor's office building and, you know, with the reconfiguration of the healthcare industry, their model is changing, and so, there's no, not like these other doctors coming along and say, yeah, I want that building. So, then you have to look at, well, does it work as an office building for somebody else? What would that be? Uh, does it work as converting it to apartments? Of course, that doesn't comply with the zoning, at least when we got involved. Our involvement started a year ago, okay, prior to this district and all these other things that are going on, and they simply said, well, what do you think the highest and best use would be? And right now, we're working in a lot of different towns with forty R projects, that seems to be the new gold rush, you know, for years it was forty B, now it's forty R, uh, where the state is giving developers incentives to build greater density and on projects close proximity to public transportation. So, I said, you know, maybe this would be a candidate, I don't know if they've got a district yet, yeah, of course you have to get a district established and all these kinds of things, but we just simply said, well, what would make sense here? And we looked at it and we came up with a design concept, like I said, that preceded all your efforts to change the district, and we just said, what would work here? What, who, what kind of project would work where a developer would come along and be interested in this property? It was simply that kind of question. And this is what we came up with, then I'm gonna have Stan just take a couple of minutes and show you what we did. This is a year ago.
Okay.
So, this has nothing to do with your current zoning, we're not proposing this.
This is all done previous to.
Yep.
To that effort.
So, this would be a totally new structure?
Totally, yeah.
Yeah, you would tear down the building and start over.
The existing building would, to be remodeled and to be refocused, it was, it was like a war's nest, though, things all over the place and it wasn't very accomplished. So, we looked at it as if it were a clean slate, and what we have is a site that's eighty-one feet wide along North Franklin Street and it's all the way four hundred and forty-five feet deep, so it's basically a string bank.
Does it go all the way back to Beltray?
No.
No.
No, there's a field behind it.
One lot, one lot behind it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so, we thought of comparable, a combination of affordable and market-rate housing. So, we positioned the building that would do the most economic good in terms of yield and getting the most units in a, in a satisfactory way that would kind of blend into the town. So, the first thing we did was segregate it, with the center of the building, first of all, we had to meet the, the, the very narrow building wide, so we just had just enough room to get a, a nineteen-foot driveway here, leaving the, the rest of the building eight, so the, the building's only like fifty-seven feet wide, so it's a very narrow and long building. We put half, half of the, so we conceived of a, a footprint that would be about twelve units a floor, so this, this footprint of the building would take about twelve units per floor, and we put lower parking underneath, and that's, we're finding that's an amenity on a lot of projects we're doing right now with, with the winter and everything, and people would, you know, pay more to have a covered parking space, and they're, they're very popular and we're finding out in all of our work that we're doing with apartment buildings or condominiums that covered parking is, is like a, the goldmine right now. Everybody wants covered parking because nobody wants to shovel out the snow. So, we basically have forty-eight units in a four-story building, four stories of residences and one story of, of engraft parking underneath, so the building is basically lifted up on little stilts, so it's covered in, the columns are covered in clavbered, and it's a clavbered looking building and with a sloped roof. Uh, downstairs to the front, we have half the parking here and half the parking here, so the building is set midway in the site, so the parking wouldn't be, just balanced. We have sixty-five cars proposed, uh, twenty here, fifteen there and twenty-eight under the building, so in the sixty-five parking spaces, we have twenty-eight of them are underneath the building, which means that a lot of the units will get a covered parking space. Uh, in the front of the building, we tried to make it look a little sort of, kind of New England flavor to it. Um, we have a commons room, uh, an entry and then the elevator and stair and then a nice little lounge up on the front. So, the front of the building has all of these uses that covers the car, so you, you would just see this, uh, you wouldn't see any, any of the parking behind that. So, the circulation is we come around in through here and then back in, and then there's enough for a turnaround for a fire truck in the back to back up and turn around, and all the services are in the back and we put some landscaping up in the front. So, the building would have approximately, um, on each floor, there'd be twelve units, five would be, uh, one bedrooms and seven would be two bedrooms. So, in the total, we have twenty, proposed twenty-one bedrooms and twenty-eight two bedrooms. And it's, it's a long building, it's a very long and narrow building, and I think it fits the site, I mean, the, the site is kind of telling you everything it wants to be with, with the narrow, it's shaped like a banana.
And, and coincidentally, I mean, we just came up with highest and best use, taking a stab at forty-eight units, and coincidentally, forty R says about forty-five.
Yeah, forty-five was.
So, it's kind of following those parameters, so to speak.
Without it being intentional, we came up with.
Yeah, it was unintentional, they came up with that.
Well, it just seemed that, that a twelve-unit footprint building is, is large enough to be economical, but small enough to be sort of an intimate scale building. Um, we put a sloped roof on it and some turrets and decorated the shed so it would look more like a residential building. This side would be close up to the edge, so you wouldn't see much of this, this opening and this side would be open. And all the services are hidden, like the trash room and the electric and all that stuff is hidden from view, so you wouldn't really see it. And, and I think it works pretty well as a simple building and, uh, it's modest, we'd have a lot of one bedrooms, finding that, uh, there's more of a demand for one bedrooms than we thought.
I think that's interesting, uh, you know, when you're asked to design something like this, we have to kind of invent the criteria because the people who are asking us don't necessarily know. So, our first question is, well, who are you gonna sell these to, who's gonna rent them? And inevitably, we, we always seem to come back to young married, singles or empty nesters, their husband died, they love Holbrook, they don't want them all along, keep up the house, but they, so they want to stay in the community and they want to get a nice, secure situation. So, we don't see like, you know, families with kids in this building necessarily, it's, it's young married, singles or the older folks who want to downsize, that's, I think that's how we conceived it.
Yeah.
Ones and twos, right?
Yeah, ones and twos.
No threes or anything?
No, no threes were anticipated, it, it just didn't feel like the market was there.
What, what do people do right now who, let's say they want to, uh, downsize, you know, they, they've lived here for forty years, the husband's died, the kid's grown up, what do they do? What, is there a place for them, are there choices in town for them now?
And they don't want the maintenance and upkeep.
So, they'd have to leave town or?
Ramblewood and it's not.
Ramblewood, yeah.
Well, they're all three, most of them are threes or fours, I don't even think they have anything one or two.
Yeah, not really.
I mean, Dan, Dan told us, you guys have, they do have some.
Yeah, I don't think a lot, I think majority.
Dan Moriarty told us you haven't approved a, like a, a multifamily building in this town like since he's been alive.
A long time.
We have a condominium complex that's been approved for quite a long time, waiting for it to come out of the dirt.
Yeah, yeah. Down the bone alley, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I, it's an interesting idea, I, I think the key, obviously, a one key would be zoning, I mean, we don't have that zoning. Um, whether or not it would, you know, how we would zone it.
That's the question.
Would be a big question, you obviously can't just zone that lot.
No, you can't.
Um, and, you know, and we've already gone through the overlay district, right, in, you know, and that covers this area, right? So, it would be, we'd like, we'd like to see some done under the, once the, I'm assuming So, it would be, we'd like, we'd like to see some done under the, once the, I'm assuming that it's gonna get approved by the state. Once we get that approved, we'd like to see some of those projects happen. I, I, I think the concept, I'm not, I wouldn't be totally against it, but I think you'd be looking years...
Yeah, what is the mechanism that this board could go there, short of spot zoning, which could be challenged?
Well, you can't.
That's it, that's it.
It would have, it would have to, we'd have to come up with a whole different zoning article.
That's right.
Go before town meeting.
That's right.
And it would have to be, I'm not even sure what it would be.
Right.
You know, because we'd have to really look at it as how it would affect our overlay district we have now.
Right.
And, and I don't know.
I think this was, we were asked to do this to try to get the conversation going in your town, actually. Because it was after we did this that our guy started talking to people like you and others, that maybe it's time that the town consider something like you passed, which was a little bit different than what...
Yeah.
But I think this was one of the pieces that got the conversation going from what I'm being told.
It might have been. Um, i- is there any, is there any concept that would work under our current?
Well, and, and in your current zoning, uh, you know, I'm meeting with Dan. He said, well, you know, they're, they've asked for an extension, then it could be challenged. It could be another year. So, I mean, who knows? Right now, it's in, it's, it's, it's a quandary that no developer is gonna come along until that gets settled finally.
I, sure.
But if it is, let's say next month it's finalized, then I believe, I'm, I guess you could build fifteen units under that.
I, I think you could probably build one now. I don't see why, where's the restriction on units in that? I don't think there is. It's three stories, right? Through above, uh, not total, isn't it a total of four? Isn't that how it ended up?
In what, the new overlay?
The new overlay.
I thought it was forty feet.
What is that formula?
It's footage. I think it was forty-five feet, is it?
Yeah, but that's, I think, I think it breaks down to a four...
Three to roof line?
Yeah.
I think it's the way we were looking at it.
Do you have a copy of that?
Let me see.
I mean, we could, we could go back and look at it.
I think you should, because I don't, I, I think you'd get more units than fifteen units.
Yeah.
I don't see any reason why you'd be restricted, restricted to that few.
Didn't you say that it was forty, didn't you say it was twenty units an acre?
Maybe three floors, I think.
Oh, you mean for the forty yards?
Five stories, that and a little town.
Yeah, five was a little...
That's a skyscraper.
Wasn't it twenty units per acre?
No, a lot.
Huh?
We have a little bit more than three-quarters of an acre.
So, what's the front inch again? Like eighty-one?
Eighty-one feet.
Eighty-one feet?
So, I mean, you said the building's fifty-seven feet wide and then the front driveway is nineteen feet. So...
Well, the driveway that connects the, the back through...
So, yeah.
Let's sit back.
That's sideline to sideline.
Seventy-six feet right there. And you only have...
It's a narrow building.
Five more feet on each side to play with. That's gonna be tight.
Well, that's what, you know, I think, I think the five stories...
It's a very efficient, narrow building.
That's for forty yards.
Okay, forty yards.
Eighty-one feet is very...
But I, I, I don't see any reason why it would be restricted to fifteen units. But I, but I don't think you're gonna get as many as this would get because I, I don't think that number of floors would fly.
Well, what we could... What we could do is go back and check, uh, you know, maybe what could happen.
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to see you come back with something that either, either totally meets or, or comes really close to meeting our, our current overlay. And, and if that were the case, I think we'd be all happy to listen.
What is the actual current overlay restriction? The current overlay?
Well, it's...
The overlay now is...
The attorney general has to approve it, for one thing.
They're waiting for that.
We're waiting for that. So, it hasn't been approved yet, but we think it will be.
What you have now, it's only three, three units.
Oh, yeah, what's now, oh, yeah, no, what, what's current is not gonna work for you.
So...
And that's outside of our, it's a, it's a...
Could we get?
No, I, no.
Is it a bit?
Yeah, we added, yeah.
We did, okay, okay, good.
If there's twelve units per floor on what they have now and fifteen is what would be allowed in the new one?
Is that what it says?
I think so, cause I gave you the, um, the, the whole town meeting article. And he, he worked on that.
Yeah. But I think if you, yeah, if you take the article, look at it, see what you can come up with, you know? I, I would love to see a project come in under the, under the new, the new rules.
Cause I'm, I'm a little confused. If it, if it's, would be allowed to be fifteen total, maybe? I think that, that would be it under you guys' overlay?
I don't remember.
I think that was recommended.
Restricting units.
No, there's, there's no, there's no number.
Based on the size, how much space there was.
I think I, I don't, we shouldn't be guessing anything. We should maybe have some.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying.
Yeah, I thought that's what it was.
I think, I think you make a good suggestion. We'll go back and take a look see.
Yeah.
Look at, look at it and...
Cause that's somewhat new to us, cause remember, we did this a year ago.
Oh, I know, that's what I'm saying.
We're working in the blind.
But you, but it might, it, you know, you might see it and say, gee, that's something that could work.
We'll do that.
Well, the other, the other thing that was intended to push more so was mixed use also, which that's not.
Well, that is the...
Yeah, I'd like to talk about that for a minute, cause we were just talking about that in the hallway. I would agree that mixed use is ideal. Now, there's a funny little thing with the site. It's very small. And when you're trying to get retail, you know how people are, they want to see the parking spaces. And you want to, and the car just pulls right in there, right? You got a little bit of a hill going in there. There's all sorts of reasons that, that subconsciously say, don't come in here, I'm not gonna make it easy for you. And how much of a retail component can you get in there that would be successful? The other equation, of course, is retail takes up a lot of parking and to do the retail, you're gonna be sacrificing, you know, a dozen units, which makes it less attractive for a developer. The other strange thing that you have that kind of comes into play is the kind of guy that's gonna come along and do this, he's not gonna be a ginormous developer like, like Stu on the, uh, the Bowlin Alley. He's not gonna be the little small guy. He's gonna be a medium guy who knows housing. The little retail component's gonna be a nuisance to him. He's not gonna want to do it. So, the site isn't really suggesting that it wants to be retail. The question is, if you guys said, you gotta have retail and the guy was hell-bent on developing it, then we would do that. But I would say that there's a marginal chance that's gonna be, that's gonna work.
Well, but I mean, retail, I, I, it doesn't have to be a supermarket. I mean, it could be a dentist's office. Um, it could be those kind of...
No, I understand.
Businesses that, that wouldn't necessarily require the level of parking that a, a market would require.
So, and, and I get that completely. We were just brainstorming what kind of business and we're all drawing blanks. But think about, you're gonna live here, right? And you've got, I don't know, let's say you're gonna do retail, so you, you'd have to provide parking. So, you'd have to do maybe, I don't know, ten, ten less units, I don't know, whatever it would be. So, you're gonna have like thirty-five residences, you're gonna have one little retail thing, cause it's not big enough to put much of retail there at all.
No, it isn't.
So, it's kind of one of those strange things.
But I know.
You know, I'm just saying.
It's a strange lot. That's the issue.
It's a strange lot, that's it.
It's a very strange lot.
Because your retail lobby, if you have the first floor, you're gonna lose that parking if you went there.
That's it.
You lose parking completely, not much of spots.
But it doesn't have to be like a store. It could be an office. It doesn't, you know, and it doesn't have to be something that's gonna have lots of...
Yeah, cause you want the fabric of the town and the connection. And, and I mean, I fully understand that. And I think we would, we would support that if we felt that, uh, that had a chance of succeeding. I, I think that, I mean, I fully get where you're coming from with that and I, and I see that. Uh, I have to balance it against, you know, getting somebody interested in coming along and taking this on too, who's not gonna want to even do that.
But there might be ways that you could do it, that the retail section was relatively small. Particularly if you kept your design concept of the parking underneath like that.
Yep, yep.
You could make it so that, and you wouldn't need as much parking if you didn't have five stories.
Right.
So, that might becomes an issue. Some, that, that opens up some spaces.
You know what? We'll take a look see at that, okay?
I think that's really what we'd like to see you do.
Okay.
If that doesn't work, you know, like I said, it would be a long time before you'd get...
We'll let the developer battle that out with you.
Yeah.
But I, I would agree. Let's try to make a, take a look see at that.
What is the general overall purpose of the overlay district? What is it trying to achieve?
What we're trying to achieve is to, to, to bring up the center of town to a, to, you know, would make it alive at night.
Activity? I think this is the kind of project that would...
More pedestrian-friendly, like more pedestrian-friendly.
It is.
A walking kind of town.
I mean, this is the ingredient that it's missing.
Yeah.
Residences right in the town.
Well, it, that's part of why it's supposed to be business on the lower level and residences above. And I think the way we put it in was a, a height, we raised the height to it's higher than most zoning in town allows. And take a look at it.
We will.
Come up with.
So, if we do that, cause we're not working for anybody right now, then we're indirectly working for you. Because we don't have anybody paying us. We'll invest the time if you'll invest the time to see us again.
Oh, we'll see you.
Definitely, absolutely. All right. So, this is kind of a, a what-if, and to test your own little zoning out and see how it works.
I, I, you know, we, we, we want to have somebody use it.
Just be put on the agenda, so we're aware you're coming, that's all.
Yeah, well, this has happened by...
She's our quarterback.
I, I was trying to call him till I get...
Let me tell you the story, how I got here tonight.
We don't have time for the story.
Do you want, do you want to be on the agenda on the fourth of November?
I'll default to my colleague here. How fast can you do a sketch?
Don't have to be. I'm not, I'm not trying to...
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring something.
If you want to.
Yeah, we'll bring something.
And we can put them on the agenda for, after the public hearing. If you want to bring something in.
Is there, is there a height issue that you would, you really object to the height?
It's in the, it's in the, it's in the new zoning.
It's in the new zoning.
It's all there.
And, and personally, if it was acceptable or not, I don't think five stories is gonna fly.
No, I don't.
With any of those neighbors over there and anybody, whether, whether the zoning's there or not, I think you're gonna get a lot of, uh... Just the economics of it. I don't know if it's gonna be...
How, how, how tall is the yellow...
I mean, I, I always suggest if anything, you would stick it to, no more than three stories plus your underground and maybe expand a little if you had to.
Three stories above the covered parking?
Yeah, and then, again, even that, I think you're, I think you're probably pushing the height limits.
So, you're talking thirty-six units and then by the time you work on some retail, you could be talking twenty-five units.
Well, again, I said that, you know, if you're losing the height, you know, if you still have more covered parking, you could maybe stretch the building a little more and push it out, you know, another twenty feet in the back or something. So...
What about, what about half submerged?
Sixteen to four.
I was just gonna say, you can half-submerge the covered parking, so your total, and I think the restriction is total height. So, I think that you...
Is it a height above average grade?
Finish grade.
Finish grade?
I believe that's how it was.
Finish grade around the perimeter?
Yeah. Yeah, so if you, if you, if you, you know, obviously if you had a way to, um...
Sink it down a little bit.
To recess the lot a little bit, you know, it's, you're lowering your finish grade.
Could recess the footprint.
Yeah, yeah.
Down a little bit here and up a little bit there. This sort of thing would sink five feet.
Yeah.
It's feasible.
It's definitely feasible and it's not that expensive to do.
So, if we sink it, will we get the four levels?
Take a look at the zoning.
Again, I don't, I don't, yeah, cause it's, it's due to what's still.
You know what it is?
Due to what's still.
Um, trying to help you guys get somebody interested in this and, and the more economical I can make it, the better off it is gonna be to get somebody in here to do the project. So, I'm kind of fighting for a client I don't even have.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
If you build it, they will come, maybe.
It's an economics question.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure the, the height restriction is a hard number in, in the...
Yeah. I think that's really what you wanna look at is...[1727.18]